Hi, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to the joint meeting of the school board and town council. We will start, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance. So we are just returning from a brief recess. We had tours of the new construction of the high school and the elementary school with our facilities director. And I will go ahead and turn it over to our town administrator, Steve Lorin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Councilors. The members of the school board, we're headed. Tonight, the first item on our agenda, and we usually try to do this at the beginning, after officials are elected. We didn't have our meeting until later in the year, so we're going to start this now. What we're just going to go over is the basic forms of municipal government in New Hampshire. There is a difference between the way the school is governed and the way the town is governed.
Hey, Steve. Steve?
Yeah?
Should we do introductions?
That's one good idea. I'm Steve Lorin, I'm the town administrator. If you'll stop there.
So, because some of us don't know each other, the boards meet only once a year typically. So I'm Tony Weinstein, I'm Chair of the Town Council.
I'm Amy Burns, I'm Vice Chair of the Town Council.
My name is Zachary Dyma, I'm a Town Counselor.
Gretchen Kess, Town Counselor.
Casey Finch, Town Counsel.
Elizabeth McKinnney, School Board.
Jennifer Williams, Police Department.
Susan Givens, Superintendent Schools.
Mike Penison, Chair of the School Board.
Helen Sanders, Town Counselor.
John Typer, Town Counsel.
And just for background, starting, I guess, five or six years ago, when we had our charter commission, at that time, we added into the charter that the Town Council would at least annually invite the school board to a joint meeting. And the idea behind that was just to improve communication and help the boards work together because we're one community. So that's where all this came from, and we've met, I think, annually every year since. Thank you.
So as I was saying, Newmarket is unique in its form of government. And what many people may think of how we govern ourselves, and we may hear other communities how they govern themselves around the area, we are not the same. So I thought it would be a good way to outline how do municipalities in New Hampshire govern themselves. There are 234 cities and towns in the state of New Hampshire. Everything from Manchester, a population of about 120,000, down to Hyslocation with 40 000 people in the mountains. So you have the district realm of government. There are 167 school districts in the state of New Hampshire, or SAUs. So you can tell there's a difference between the number of towns and the number of schools just due to the fact that they have consolidated school districts and consolidated school districts. So what I'm just going to go over is what we have for government in New Hampshire. Anytime you have a question, just jump in and ask me what's going on. So on the municipal side, the cities and towns, there are really four basic types of municipal government. And you can get in the weeds on every topic out there, but really, there are only four. The first is what we call the Strong Mayor and the Board of Alderweil. In that form of government, the people elect the CEO to run the city, which is the mayor. And people then elect a representative body to set the policy for the city. And they're also the legislative body for the city, and they're called the Board of Alderweil. There are two cities with this form, and they're Manchester National. So what you traditionally think of what a mayor does for a job only do that in two communities in the state of New Hampshire. That's Manchester National. The next form of government is what we refer to as the council manager form of government. Voters elect a legislative body for the city or town, which is the city or town council. The head of the council serves as the figurehead for the community, which is the mayor in the city's form of government. Or in town council form of government is the council chair. The council then hires a professional CEO to run the community and day-to-day operations, which is a city or town manager, or in certain situations, they have the title of Town Administrator. There are 11 cities and seven towns in the state that have this form of government. The cities around here are Dover, Rochester, Portsmouth, and Somersworth. And the towns are Durham, and Newmarket. We have the council form of government. And then, what most people consider when you refer to as a town, there's two types of that. The first is what we refer to as a Select Board SB2, or Senate Bill 2. The voters elect a select board to serve as the governing body. So usually, it's either three to five members. They're called Select Board Members or Selectmen, as they used to be referred to. They may, they don't have to, appoint a town manager or administrator to be the chief administrative officer. The town meeting serves as a legislative body. And this is broken up into two sessions. First is deliberate session, where people meet to deliberate the articles and amend them. Do you know voting at that session? That goes on to the March ballot. And on Town Meeting Day, you just receive a ballot, and all the questions are on there. We're a hybrid on the town side between the council manager and the SB2 because our budget still goes on the ballot. It's the only thing that we have. So I always get questions, "Well, I want to petition this issue and go on the ballot." You can't. There's no petition authority to have questions done in Newmarket. Because that's the role of the council. Zoning amendments, everything that is the council. The only thing that can be petitioned is raising funds, or charter amendments. The other thing I want to differentiate, too, is between the town manager and the town administrator, and my role in this situation. So in the SB2, traditional Select Board meeting, there is a significant difference between a town manager and a town administrator. The town manager gets all his or her authority through statute. So it's set up in the state laws, and this is what they have the right to do. The town administrator under the Select Board only receives as much authority as the Select Board gives them. It can be everything from the authority of an administrative assistant to a de facto town manager. In our system, the RSA says, doesn't matter what you call the position, that individual has all the authority of town manager plus whatever your town charter says. So in all actuality, I have more authority inclined with the city manager than I do with a town manager, just for their form of government. There are 68 towns in the state that operate under the Select Board SB2, and this is where I always hear the confusing part. These are around here, Exeter, Hampton, Rye, and Barrington. We'll always hear, "Well, Exeter's doing this, this, and this." Well, we don't operate the same way as Exeter, on the town side. We're completely different. I always say that, and the council, usually their first day, say, "Do not follow what Exeter and Hampton are doing. Follow how Durham, Portsmouth, Dover, Rochester, and Somersworth do." That's how we have to follow the law. And finally, the last form of municipal government is the Select Board Traditional Town Meeting. This is that Norman Rockwell standing up at the meeting hall, voting at town meeting. The voters elect a Select Board, serves the governing body. They only set policy, they do not pass any ordinances, any zoning amendments. That all goes to the ballot. They still may appoint a town manager or town administrator. But town meeting serves as the full legislative bodies. So they meet annually, and they approve all warrant articles in that meeting that could last from 20 minutes to eight hours. And they sit in one room, and they just hash out all the details, and they vote that day. This is actually most towns in the state. Because what it was, was back in the late 1800s, and I'm getting my early kind of municipal government thing. There was a Supreme Court case that stated that, you know, if a municipality gets to be about the population of 10,000, they should not be a town meeting, or they should be a representative form of government. And the argument there is that it's just too weak for a proper town meeting. But that was back when it went, and not what we have now. So back then, that's when they were saying, there is no threshold for population. That's another misconception of becoming a city or town council. If we were to ever become a city, we would actually be the third smallest. We wouldn't even be the smallest city. Because there are two cities. One city is only about, not even 8,000 yet, and we believe Berlin is about our population, is fluctuating just because of laws. I mean, again, you could get, so it's anything from 7,000 to 120. The largest town in the state is actually Derry, and operates the way we do. And that's 40,000 people. The largest town with SB2 is Samuel, which I've seen there's SB2 sessions. It's a nightmare because sometimes they have to actually simulcast it, because there's not enough room in one building. So that's the reason for that. Now, the basics of school governance. There are actually two different types, and then we're going to get into the weeds with actually the meeting, how they have their meetings. The first is what we refer to as a dependent school district. The people elect a legislative body, or the legislative body appoints the Board of Education. No municipality or state any longer appoints a school board. Up until the early 80s, Berlin appointed their school board. The city council had the authority to appoint the school board. Up until the late 70s, Somersworth got to appoint half, and the people elected half. So that, it's still on the books, but nobody does that any longer. Manchester elects their school board, everybody down. State law is, you must appoint a superintendent of schools. No way for Andrew Budson, there has to be the education officer to oversee it. In this situation, though, the schools approve, and they present the budget to the CEO. So if you think back, the CEO is either the mayor or the city manager. So that's the one difference. And you'll see this a lot around here, because, again, Portsmouth, Dover, Rochester, and Somersworth, when the school board passes their budget, it gets sent to the city council for review. Legally, the manager could make changes. I've never, ever seen it, because they know it's the third rail, but they could do that. The CEO includes the budget in their presentation to the legislative bodies. This can only be done in cities, and it can only be done now with act of the state legislature. Because all those cities were adopted prior to what we call home rule, and their charters were adopted, and they made them dependent school districts. Even some of the cities do not have dependent school districts, like Concord, Glenville, Lebanon, do not have solid independent school districts. And then we have the independent school district SB2. This is where Newmarket falls. Voters elect the school board as a governing body, and the governing body appoints a superintendent. The school district meeting serves as a legislative body. They may have a municipal budget committee to review the budget and make recommendations or revise the budget. All they do is recommend and revise. They have no authority over where the school board spends the money after it's appropriated. Deliberative session meets, people, they meet to deliberate and amend articles, much like the town. And people then vote on Town Meeting Day and approve the articles. Again, this is most towns in the state, and Newmarket falls under this. And finally, it's the independent school district traditional town meeting. School boards elected are superintendented, and they have the traditional town meeting. We hash out all the articles, and they just meet and go with those warrant articles. So we're a hybrid between two different forms of government. On the town side, we're closer to a city. On the school, it's traditional town. So that's why some of the things you'll see that we do are different, on the way we govern ourselves. But I think it's a good way to just outline it, so you guys know anyway. Any questions? And the big thing that we have that the school does not, we have a constitution, which is when we refer to the town charter. That sets up our form of government. The school was only established, they must follow all state law. So we can amend the way we govern ourselves, where the school can only do it in state law. That's all we have.
So the next item on our agenda is an update on shared services. And you're listed as the...
I can sign if you want.
You know more about it than I do, so...
So, as the council and school board know, a few years ago, it was a goal of both boards to begin studying and implementing shared services between the two governments to find efficiencies, and try to find some potential money-saving aspects, as well as improve communications. A few years ago, we worked and negotiated to share two certain types of services. One was we combined the position of business administrator and finance director from the school and finance director from the town into one individual. And the second was we created the position of facilities director for both sides. The way we had it, we both negotiated a memorandum of understanding between the two units. Under the finance one, that the finance director was actually an employee of the school, and we contracted, the town contracted with the school for those services. On the flip side, the facilities director was an employee of the town, and the school then contracts with the town for those services. As everybody knows, this past year, we had a resignation in the finance director position. And please, Superintendent, if I misspeak, just jump in. The superintendent also was new at that time, and started. And at that point in time, we discussed and felt that it wasn't going to be beneficial for operations on either side to continue to share that position at this time. Superintendent needed a strong number two CLO position, and we needed some more assistance on our side. So at that point, the town is now contracting for our finance director position until such time as I hire an individual, and I believe the school district is in the process of interviewing or hiring of a business administrator. I don't want to say this was in any way a failure of the sharing of the services. I think it's just we realized that's a position that we need to have two individuals at this point in time. I think there are other services that we could look at in the future to share under that, but at this point in time, it's those positions are just too important to have shared. The second, we still have our shared facilities director. The memorandum of understanding will be expiring shortly. We met recently with the two chairs, the superintendent and I, and the superintendent and I are going to review the MOU and come up with some changes, and present that to the council and the school board in the near future to just continue on that relationship for a few more years. You know, everything's still on the table for shared services, if there's, makes sense that we share. And I don't, it sounds like those are the only two things that we share. We share a lot of services. We share a building with the SAU and the town hall. We share purchasing of oil. We share plowing of parking lots and maintenance of playgrounds. So it's not some unique concept that we had two positions share. We share a lot of other things. It's just that one, those are the two big ones at this point in time. Other than that, I mean, I think everything is going well. We understand that the facilities director has got a big project right now with the schools being open, so he's spending a lot of time over here. We're still getting a lot of our projects done on the town side. So it's, that position's been beneficial at this point in time.
If I can, Steve, I'd just add to that, that I've been on board since the facilities director has started, and it's just a lot of common sense to it. We have buildings, you might need a boiler in a town building and a boiler in a school building. Do you want to purchase those together and maybe get a better price for two of them? Or have two different ones, and have two different control systems, and you need one person over here to figure out how to run that boiler and this? Same thing with anything in these buildings. To the extent you can have commonality, whether it's phone systems, security systems, or really anything, you're saving money and you're providing better service generally, overall as a town. So I think that's been, it's been a really good shift. Our facilities director has been doubling, as are clerk of the works for the building projects. That's what Steve alluded to. So once that's done, later on this spring, the construction's done at the high school, the facilities director will revert back to the original understanding in the MOU, and will be, you know, basically in charge of all the facilities. This is hugely important, too, over the long term, I think, for at least two reasons. Maintenance. You often, you know, hear of municipalities, they just, they haven't maintained things, or they don't have a program of maintenance. We're actually required by law now, under the educational statutes, to have a maintenance plan once we're done with the construction. So that's hugely helpful to have that facilities director there. And also, the capital improvement planning, long-term needs. You have a professional who's skilled in the building trades be able to look at your roofs, to look at your doors, and all your other functionality, and come up with a systematic program so the town's not porpoising up and down in terms of expense over time. So that's, you know, those aren't really the exciting things, but they mean a lot when you, you know, if you're going up and down. The kind of things you don't notice if they've been done right. There's no big jumps from year to year. That's another important aspect of this meeting, I think, is that we're getting together and talking about things. Like if the town's got a project coming up, or we do coming up, we want to be talking about that. We don't want to, you know, necessarily hit the town with two big projects all at once. Usually, you can plan these things out, so again, you're kind of staying even. So I think in particular, the facilities director has been a real, real bonus.
I don't think there's much to add, really. I agree with what Mike's shared and the town administrator said. Thank you, Steve. Well done.
If there's no other comments, I just have one quick thing to add to that. And I think that that goes back to what I mentioned with the charter commission. And at that time, you know, this was all, you know, impossible, honestly. I think that our town has come so far in the boards being able to work together, and the community really being able to work together. There's been a few things that have happened to help facilitate that. Besides just, besides shared positions, this meeting on a regular basis has been really important. The school board having representation at the CIP, in the CIP process, these are new things. They haven't been around for forever, and, you know, relatively new. And I think that they have all helped to have each side sort of understand, you know, where our town is headed. Because I think that that's really the important thing, is looking at, we're one community, and we're one set of tax dollars. And we're, you know, we have to figure out how we're going to move forward and what our priorities are. So, thank you. So if there's no other questions or comments, then I'm going to go ahead and move on to our update on sustainability. Though I unfortunately don't have the slides printed, so I'm creating them. Wasn't really thinking about the setup. So thanks so much for allowing me to have a few minutes to talk about the Newmarket Energy and Environment Advisory Committee. What I want, my goals for this short presentation is just to introduce the committee, the idea of the committee, to the school board and to the community, to let you know what we've been doing, to talk in particular about our food composting program that we started here as a municipality, and then hopefully offer some ideas for how the schools might be able to introduce food composting into their programs and curriculum. So first, I just want to mention that two members of the committee are also here, and Don Sanders and Bill Turner are partners. And Don, for the most part, put together this presentation, although he emailed it to me and I, I feel it'd be sad to see that I changed a lot. I just deleted a lot because it made interest of time. Don is incredibly thorough and knows more about, if there are any questions, I'm going to deflect to you, because you know more about this subject probably than I do. So...
Just an arrow.
Maybe I'll... Okay, you're right. I'll just... Awesome. So the Newmarket Energy and Environment Advisory Committee is an ensemble, was, started about two years ago with some goals in mind. And that was to recommend best practices, to review policies, to do community outreach and education, and to recommend actions, projects, programs to the town council for funding. So some of the things that we've been working on in these last couple of years are the food waste composting program, which I'm going to talk more in depth about. The EV charging station, which is brand new, was just installed at the library, if you've seen it. It's very exciting, a little controversial, but I think incredibly beneficial. We've been looking at the municipal heat control program, pretty in depth, and we'll be having a report ready for the town council soon. We've done one community education program about a year ago, and we have another next week on October 1st. The last one that we did was called the Button Up Program, which is something that we did with New Hampshire Saves. And it was about implementing energy-saving solutions in your home. And the one that we have scheduled for next week is through Revision Energy, and it's about having, using solar and having a 100% renewable home, or, you know, as close to 100% as we can get. 100% being the goal. And then we're also working on a greenhouse gas and nitrogen inventory to give us, to give the town a baseline for what we're currently consuming, and then to give us some sense of whether or not we're making any improvements. So food waste composting, that's the majority of what I want to talk to you about tonight. We started a program in Newmarket in April of this past year. And, you know, the goal of the program is ultimately to create more of this with our food waste and less of that. That's the ultimate goal. Our current situation, basically in a nutshell, we generate a tremendous amount of trash. It's incredibly expensive, and we don't have anywhere to put it. We're running out of places to put it. So in 2015, the U.S. generated 262 million tons of municipal salad waste. And, you know, there's a couple of different studies that showed, so somewhere between 40 to 56% of that was compostable. We throw away more than 38 million tons of food every year. And these numbers are a little bit old. I can only imagine that it's gotten worse, not better. Municipal salad waste fees for trash and recyclables are going up. I'm sure that there are lots, there's lots and lots of information about why the recyclable market is collapsing, but it's a real problem, and it's going to be a real problem for municipalities as we move forward, because it's not getting less expensive. And landfill waste is becoming scarce, so there aren't, there aren't any blue landfills that are being approved, and more and more are closing. So in New Hampshire, we have one landfill. Right, Rochester?
Two.
Two?
Bethlehem. Casella.
So what can we do about it? That's where the composting has, it can come in. We started a composting private, as I mentioned. We can save money, we can conserve resources, we do, help to reduce climate warming gases, and extend the life of our landfill. market is collapsing, but it's a real problem, and it's going to be a real problem for municipalities as we move forward, because it's not getting less expensive. And landfill space is becoming scarce, so there are, there aren't any new landfills that are being approved, and more and more closing. So in New Hampshire, we have one landfill. Right, Rochester?
Two.
Two?
Bethlehem. To sell it.
So what can we do about it? That's where the composting has, it can come in, and we started a composting private, as I mentioned. We can save money, we can conserve resources, reduce, help to reduce climate warming gases, and extend the life of our landfills by saving space. In addition to that, whether that's at home or in a school setting, we can provide learning experiences for our students, for our children. So New Market's composting program, as I mentioned, started in April of this past year. We have 96, two 96-gallon bins at the transfer station. It's open during regular business hours. People can bring their compost to the transfer station, so there's no curbside pickup, which is a little different than our regular trash program. Residents bring their stuff in a bucket or in compostable green bags. There's no charge to participate. We use a private company, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that, that's Mr. Fox. They're pretty much the only game in town when it comes to composting, and for a few different reasons. They ported the market pretty early on, I think, and they provide a pretty fantastic service as a town. We don't, you know, endorse any particular company, but this is the company that we chose to use. And again, there weren't a whole lot of options, so. And we have information posted on signs in town and on the town website. So it's a really, I do say so myself, a great program, and something that the Energy and Environment Committee would really heart on. So what does that mean? How does that translate then to schools? There's a school study that was done in Minnesota, and again, the numbers are fairly, are pretty staggering. 78% of school waste can be diverted from the trash, is what they found in their study. 50% of school waste can be managed via organic composting. The single most common material generated is food waste, not surprising, almost 24% of the total waste generated. So a quarter of that, you know, 78%, is food waste. The schools have an average per capita waste generation of half a pound a day, so fairly simple math calculation, which we do, New Market School population, we're looking that we generate an estimated 127 pounds of waste per day in the school district. It's a lot, 147 tons per year. So again, if 24% of that is food waste and could be potentially composted, that's pretty incredible. And then there are other items that could be composted as well, but right now, we're just talking about food waste. So there are, there are lots of schools that currently compost in that area, and I'm just going to talk about two in particular, just to highlight a couple of programs that have happened. Oyster River Middle School began composting in 2013. They compost five to 10 48-gallon chokes per week, it varies. It's taking anywhere from 500 to 1,000 pounds per week out of the waste stream. Again, pretty significant. And in Winnicott High School, they started a food waste program as a senior project in 2015. They diverted seven tons in 14 weeks. Like incredible. Received the board, which is always fun, and they used a local transfer station and a commercial hall. So that's just like, those are a couple of examples of local schools. And I mentioned Mr. Fox. And so as of yesterday, on their website, Mr. Fox works with a number of schools in the area. So these are all schools that Mr. Fox is currently working with, and everywhere, you know, from preschools to high schools, middle schools, private schools, public schools. So it's really a wide range of schools. I have to say that my experience in, in, maybe Rick Malaski would have a different idea, I don't think so, but it was really very easy and painless for us to set this up with Mr. Fox. And I would imagine that it would be just as easy for a school to set it up. So we wanted to take this opportunity to just highlight this program, because I think that it could be incredibly beneficial to the schools, the students, the town, the environment, the world. And that's all I have, so if you have any questions.
Tony, what happens to the, Mr. Fox picks up the, the composted material, do you, do the schools or whoever, can they get some back? Do they, I mean, how does it work?
Yeah, so the current, the way the current program works, I know, so Mr. Fox, and just to back up for a second, they have residential curbside pickup that's available per P. They have municipal, and that's through, in many communities, it's definitely available in New Market. They have the municipal programs, and they have those set up kind of in different ways depending on the program. They service, I would say, the majority of restaurants in the area, churches, you know, you name it, like any facility can really set up with Mr. Fox. And that is marketed as one of the benefits that, you know, the year or whatever the timeframe is, you can get some compost back. So I would imagine that in a school setting, it's probably that much more important, if there's any sort of garden aspects of programming, that would be really important. There were some schools, you know, when I was doing research on this just recently, schools that have their own composting program, like, so they actually do the compost, which is awesome. And there's, you know, if you're a teacher, if it's a science teacher in particular, that's really great, but there are a lot of rules around composting. So in the reason that Mr. Fox is, one of the reasons Mr. Fox is so successful is that they're located in Maine. And in Maine, the laws are a little different than they are in New Hampshire, so they can compost meat byproducts, you know, so bones and meat and dairy, which we're not allowed to compost commercially in New Hampshire. So they're kind of just over the border, and that allows them to do that. So, did you have a question?
That was my question.
I know the council had asked a little while back, and we told them it was going to take a few months to get some data, but have we seen anything from Mr. Fox at this point, or are we still waiting for some more numbers, for more time to generate the numbers?
I, I haven't seen anything at this point. So April, I don't know how many months of that. How many times, six?
Six-ish, six to.
Yeah, so I don't know what the threshold is. I know that Rick had, in the last, Rick Malaski, our, our, the director, in one of our last reports to the town council, he did an update, and I can't remember offhand what it was, but I want to say around 40 people are using the service. And that, again, I don't know how, I don't know what their method is exactly for tracking that, but that's been their, their estimate anyway.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just to equate this into numbers, Steve, what is that cost per ton to get, do you have a?
I don't know, it's on my head.
$1.68?
Yeah.
Don't tell me.
Amazing, I don't, yeah.
$1.68?
$1.68.
$168 per ton?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's, that's sort of a complicated number.
Yeah. My question though is to dispose of it under regular waste stream? Not, not the cost for Mr. Fox to take care of it?
Right, yes.
So in other words, what's the savings thinking we're looking at?
Mr. Fox was 65 a ton, but that doesn't include door-to-door pickup, so that's why the numbers are a little hard to equate. But 65 a ton for Mr. Fox to come to the New Market and pick up the dump.
That's an important part of food for thought, right? Like, when you talk about seven tons, how much are you saving? Because my understanding, when we first looked at it from a town perspective, is the organic matter is the heaviest part of your waste stream. So if you can pull that out and deal with it in a more, less costly manner, you're double dipping on the savings.
And plus, we're not, we do a pay-as-you-throw system, so if you take organics out and recycling out, you're going to use less manics. So you're going to save in the long run for that too. Which I don't want, I mean, I want people to do, but also I'm losing revenue. I have to look at the bottom line.
It is, and it's, so it's a complicated number, it's not a easy number really to pin down. I can tell you from my personal experience, we take our compost, and we are not model composters by any stretch, there's a lot of stuff that still goes in the trash, and you have teenage boys, and even, I mean, I get lazy, right? And if the compost is full, or if I have emptied it, and I don't feel like, you know, it's, the bucket is in there, just throw it in the garbage. So, but even with that laziness factor, we still have noticed a huge difference in the number of orange bags that we use as family.
So to underscore, it's, it's saving the town money, the way the system works right now? Or it's not more expensive?
Right. I think it's probably a wash. I don't think it's going to save us any money, but what we are saving in, you know, being green and being, uh, being more efficient, and I think that that has a big impact. Did you want to say something before?
I spoke with the driver, I still have street pickup. I'm still paying Mr. Fox to pick up and load the transfer stations just around the street. And I spoke with the driver, and what they're seeing in town is people that are subscribed to Mr. Fox are now coming off subscription and taking their compost to the transfer station. One of the reasons why, when we did our investigation, one of the reasons why the program in New Market is taking a while to get going is because transfer station means that you have to do something and go there. The community's around here that, that the program is working really, really well, that the transfer station is, everyone in town brings their trash on a daily basis. So, so there's that little issue we discussed with the school department, and, you know, if you could separate the organics and orient, you know, have Mr. Fox come and take it away, you don't have a problem with critters in the backyard and.
Right.
And there's not worm farm or all those other things that you have to, you know, get a real big program for. You just have to have someone who wants you to make sure that the organics are going in the trash.
One of the things, John, on early on, John was on our, I mean, it's just the educational aspect of all this. It's very important for young kids to learn about this stuff when they're younger, probably develop some that happens when they're smaller.
That was, sorry, that was one of the things we were thinking about when we first started talking about it, was if we could get into the elementary school where you have a dumpster, probably right now, 30% full of food, it would be a lot easier to measure the cost, and then you could say to people, hey, this is how much we're saving in the elementary school, look what we could save if you guys all actually did this. And then especially if the kids are going home and saying, hey, we're composting at school, why aren't we composting, composting at home? Much like in the 90s with recycling, you know, no one was recycling in 1995, but, you know, you started in the school and they hammered it like pretty hard, I mean, it was like a huge thing. And then you'd go home and say to your parents, why are we recycling? And it sort of took 10 years probably. But that was kind of our thought, was, was, you know, the, the slowly get more people in the community doing it from, from that side.
So that's all I have? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is other. The next item on the agenda is other, and I have an update. Oh, I can just.
That's out? On my computer all day long, put me on somebody else's computer and I can't handle it. So yes, the next item on the agenda is other.
So as the council knows, this week, I sent off a, an email to our legislative delegation as well as the governor regarding the state budget, as we still did not have one as of 3 o'clock this afternoon, but I am happy to say we do have a state budget approved by the House and the Senate, and it's going to the governor's office for his signature, which I assume he will sign since it's his compromised budget. The town as a whole will be receiving $420,851 in additional revenue, $195,076 will be going to the town in additional, and $225,775 in additional, I keep saying additional because I don't have the numbers in front of me, what we currently get in aid, to the school. So there's some good news out of concrete, as long as the budget is signed by the governor.
Because the deadline was October 1st.
Correct. They had a continuing resolution, and it looked like as of last week, they were still going to have one, but early this week, I was informed that the budget was imminent.
Thanks to your email, Brad.
I, I would say, I think my email was pretty, pretty, yeah.
Are there any other items?
I have none. You got a? Well, I just wanted to, I was just pretty stoked to see the sustainability report on here with the Energy and Environment Committee, because I think it's a good time to mention it with the, if you look at the schools, how, how much use of resources the schools require. I think it's a great time to just kind of make those, connect those dots between Energy and Environment Committee with, whether it be just sustainability, which can be comparable or save money, and just kind of teaching that to the young people too. So I think it's awesome that it wound up the agenda, so I'm just, just confident on that one.
Then with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here we are.